Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the City Council Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024, to order. I'd like, tonight, you know, we are sitting here, we're looking at a flood here, but a minor one. Nothing like our fellow Iowans are dealing with in other parts of the state. So as we have our moment of silence and light, let's think about them. Thank you. Now, I'd ask you to stand and join Alderman Newton as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, will you please call the roll?
R. Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Reinards?
Present.
Gripp?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch?
T. Dunn?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Burkholder?
Here.
Nine present?
Thank you. Good evening. As we begin this meeting of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to welcome all of those in attendance and all those who are viewing the meeting on your computer or on a mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and viewers throughout the region, as the Committee of the Whole meetings are recorded and available online for viewing. We're happy you're participating in your city government. We ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share, to make Davenport an even greater place for all citizens. For those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. I do ask that at your time that you turn off our silent cell phones, other electronic handheld devices, so they don't interfere with anyone who may be speaking. And if you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on the agenda, you're asked to do so during the discussion of that item. Please step to the podium, wait to be recognized by the chair, and state your name and ward or address. Please address the council body as a whole and not any one individual. You will have five minutes. And I do ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you very much. Ms. Merritt, is there a city administrator update this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. This is just a reminder that our offices will be closed on Thursday. They will reopen on Friday, and from that point, we will be on our regular schedule up until September. So with that, back to you.
Thank you. There are, we have four public hearings this evening. There are two under community development and two under public works. The first two are under community development, and Alderman Gripp will lead these public hearings. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing for case ORD 24-03, being the request of Grace Real Estate to amend the principal use standards in subsection 17.08.03.5, neighborhood commercial establishment of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa, by adding daycare center and medical dental offices as permitted uses within a neighborhood commercial establishment. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Gary Eklund, I live in Davenport, and I'll be real brief. I just saw this, and I thought, well, I could get up and speak in favor of something. And I just want to say that daycare centers should be allowed to be in any neighborhood where they can be, and that's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment on this public hearing? State your name and address or ward, please.
Derek Cornet, 7th Ward. Why do we even set down regulations when companies can come in and keep requesting variances? You know, why don't you change the rules on this one? Why don't you change the rules on that one? I mean, we put the rules there for a reason. You know, is this just something that you guys feel like we should be doing on a regular basis when somebody, some business comes in and wants to change the rules? Oh, let's change it for them. I don't think that we should support this. I mean, I know we need daycare centers, and I know we need doctors' offices, but, you know, if we have to revamp everything just for, just to some, everybody's request, why, you know, why do we even make the rules? Just let people come in and ask for stuff? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. The second public hearing for case REZ 24-02, being the request of Riverview Heights LLC to rezone approximately 1.47 acres of land located on the north side of the 700 block of East Sixth Street, from R4C, single-family and two-family central residential zoning district, to R4, or to RMF, multifamily residential district. Please note that Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial, and the protest rate is over 20%, so this item will need eight votes to pass. I also, I recognize some folks in the, in the audience who are here to speak on this, so I want to just make sure you understand, the public hearing is the, the portion where we listen to you, so we will not dialogue with you, we will not make comments. The first section of our agenda, community development, this item is also listed, and at that point, you will have another opportunity to speak to the council, and then at that point, the council will ask questions and dialogue. So with that, anyone here to speak on the issue? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
My name is Jim Thompson. I'm a citizen of Davenport. I am the proposed developer of this project, and I don't think the council has had a chance to see the renderings. Not trying to shortchange anybody out here. And it's my understanding that some time ago, the council set a goal of putting market-based housing onto the city-owned lot. I think I told you when our development agreement was unanimously approved here, that I'd been trying to do this for three to four years and figure out a way that financially worked and fit into the neighborhood as best we could. And this one, frankly, is the only one that I've been able to find after several attempts with an architect to find one that worked. And I know there were others that had been in front of the council, other projects that had been in front of the council. I know what some of the objections are. One of the, one of the difficult parts of this project is Seventh Street, which is, in essence, an alley behind the lots. We don't have an answer to that, but in our plan and in our development agreement, I think what I said, or what I intended to say, was that our intention is to work with the city to figure out a good answer there. Could end up concrete, it could end up brick, but boy, the chances of that being re-bricked are very, very small, I think. I'm actually in favor of a combination, where perhaps the side of each of it would be in concrete, and we'd use the brick in the middle. I'm not the only one who gets a vote in that, and we're, as I said, we're going to work with the city on that. There was concern about waiving the right, or need for a sidewalk on Seventh Street. I'm not going to let that issue get in the way of this project. If people want a sidewalk, I'll put in a sidewalk. The zoning committee voted 3-2 to 1 to not recommend this after the public hearings. Unsure, I don't think anybody seems to know why there was an abstention. I'm kind of surprised, because the person who abstained is, works for one of the largest developers in the Quad Cities, but anyway, that's what it, that's what it is. The neighbor, the neighbors were also expressed a concern about 16 new units causing a lot of traffic in the area compared to what's there now. We, we have, on each of the four units, six garages, and as much as one or two areas that, that cars could be. This is Seventh, the back of the street, so you can see, you can almost put two cars in front of each garage. That's 48 garages. I don't think people would be parking on the streets. This is Seventh Street, that's what I pointed to. And, and I realize that it's a little bit of a stretch to get eight votes out of the council, but I sure hope you can see the, the need for this. I will tell you, with, as a guy who knows the property, understands the financials with it, the only other option that could probably be put, be put in front of you would be between eight and 10 duplexes. Doesn't take rezoning for that. And that would be four more units, creating a lot of the same issues that have been raised here. And my wife told me, don't say it, be careful how you say that, because I certainly don't mean that as a threat. It is, don't have it in me to be that kind of guy. But I think that, that's a fact with my knowledge. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
My name is Vanessa Stone. I'm Ward 3. I came here tonight and, until now, just listening to the developer on what he has planned. We all know that things change in time, and it may be one thing now and turn into something later. So with that being said, I'm just going to read kind of what I wrote before I pre-knew some of this. Good evening, my name is Vanessa Stone, and I am the resident at 805 East Sixth Street. I have lived at this residence since 2010. I am here today to kindly ask the city to deny rezoning for multifamily housing on a property sitting adjacent to my home. When I chose this property to have my home built, East Sixth Street heading west to Iowa Street had residents that the city was trying to disperse due to the numerous calls and complaints of persons making the neighborhood unsafe, as well as look less than desirable. Often, this part of East Sixth was met with heavy traffic, fast traffic, and large gatherings at any time of the day or night. These were also multifamily homes. The land sitting catty-corner to my home had a commercial building with an apartment on top facing Sylvan, as well as another two homes facing East Sixth Street. All these places were bought by the city and eventually torn down to beautify the neighborhood. To my knowledge, there hasn't been any intention of building on the property as to keep the neighborhood the way it is. The gentleman who had owned at least three to five properties in the immediate area of my home at the time had continually asked permission for the city to rezone so he could build multifamily housing, to which the city denied their request for the reasoning of not wanting the area to be inundated with families who might reintroduce same things. If you are a long-lived resident of Davenport, many of you know the history of the quote, "below Locust Quarter," which runs east of Brady, south of Locust to Federal, and west of Bridge Avenue. It goes without saying that much of this area is rental property and has sparse areas of actual homeowners. I understand the need for housing, but I don't understand why sometimes this happens at the expense of people that work hard and want safer neighborhoods. Thirteen years ago, when I moved into my home, a random person shot in the direction of my home while my then-eight-year-old daughter sat on the couch with me in my living room. When law enforcement arrived, they asked many questions, assuming to think my eight-and-13-year-old daughters might have gang affiliations or know some people who live down the way on Sixth Street. I can assure you, my daughters didn't. As a single parent, I was terrified, and I wanted to make sure that the neighborhood that I had chose was a safe one. Fast forward today, to today, I have made the right choice. I have neighbors who live in peace around me. I have families who allow their children to play outside because they feel safer about who lives in this area and less traffic moving at fast speeds to worry about. I want to ensure that this neighborhood can remain intact with integrity that has been built over time with the current, excuse me, with the current community of people. In five years from the time I moved in, Habitat for Humanity built five more houses in a one-block radius, and in 13 years, at least 10 more. My count may be off. And in these, in these 13 years, the city was able to turn property into homes west of 805 East Sixth to Iowa, places where families wanted to move with less crime, less traffic, and more desirable area. I live in a neighborhood filled with people from all walks of life, all nationalities, and most of all, all hardworking people. While I cannot speak for them all, I can say through many conversations that having a neighborhood with single-family homes is something they all have chosen as well as wanted. Most of the families do not know how the neighborhood was 10 years ago, so introducing new multifamily housing could create a little bit of chaos. I am asking the city to deny rezoning to keep this neighborhood free of heavy traffic with clean neighborhoods, safe neighborhoods, and a place where single-family homes can continue to flourish. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Gary Eklund, I live in Davenport, and I, I'm opposed to the rezoning, but I, I want to also say that the gentleman who is proposing this development has a nice drawing, and there are a lot of empty blocks now around Palmer, where buildings have been torn down and demolished, and perhaps there are some square blocks around Palmer where this exact same development might go, knowing that Palmer has lots and lots of renters who come in and rent, to go to Palmer, people from around the world. But I think this should be turned down. The city could do a lot more to promote single-family homes there. You know, they could fund the entire house and do an interest-free loan, they could waive property taxes the way they do for large corporations on all these different deals. So anyway, I'm, I'm, I support that woman in, in opposing this development, but I also think that he's went to a lot of work to develop this plan, and the city and Palmer have demolished a lot of housing surrounding Palmer. The Public Works Department's employees described it to me as the city in Davenport and Palmer working together to get rid of black low-life tenants. And I will move on quickly, that now that they, now that they have demolished, now that-
Hold on, hold on, before you move on, that's your warning, that we're not going to, to say things like that going forward tonight.
Well, I'm not the one-
Or you will sit down, and that's your warning.
To be clear, to be clear, I am not, I am not the one who is saying those things. I'm quoting Davenport City employees in their official capacity during their work hours, but I'm moving on. I'm saying that now that, for whatever reason, the city of Davenport and Palmer have jointly demolished blocks and blocks and blocks of low-income housing, that his development would fit nicely in any of those blocks up there.
Thank you.
Oh, and currently, there's trailer parks. The city could make it legal to put a trailer on a vacant lot and turn the lights on, and you'd have a, a family with a home, just like that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward.
My name's Isaac Wilmington, Ward 3, 734 East Seventh Street, where the development will be approximately right in front of my, my home. Those garages and everything that he says is going to fit there, which if you travel through that development area, you'll understand that that doesn't fit. I really don't have much to say, because I'm kind of exhausted with all the process of coming to all these meetings, trying to speak to you guys and, and all that sort. But as you look in this crowd, we're looking at a strong neighborhood, something that never existed down there on Sixth Street. I helped develop a lot of those foundations for Habitat, and I played a big part of this area. I'm committed. I'm there, this is my forever home. Well, it should be, depends on what goes on right here, but quite naturally, with the road being historic, I have a problem with that, because you can't widen it, you can't do anything. So if we keep everything the way the founders had, set the, everything up for the development to be, that's the way it should be. If he wants to put the 12 duplexes in, I'm sure we'll have to table this and, and see if that really fits, because at the end of the day, I trust in Davenport, Iowa, I'm born and raised in Davenport, Iowa. This is all I know. It's the first time I'm speaking in, in front of the board like this and communicating with my neighbors, nice neighbors. I feel safe, my children feel safe, and I was on Sixth Street back when my sister lived down there, when I was like, in seventh grade. So I know how rough it was down there, it was pretty rough. And so, with that said, like I said, the words aren't coming out of my mouth like they were on the other meetings, because this is rough. It's, it's, it's tough for me to say that this, this can be built right here, just because he, he has money and you guys want to see housing. Like the other gentleman said, you can put these houses anywhere, he can turn the same profit somewhere else, and this neighborhood can remain the same. So with that being said, that's all I can say. I'm going to go ahead and ask for you guys to think about this very seriously. This is lives on the line, and this is a close community, one that you probably don't have underneath Locust Street. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward.
Hi, my name's Mark Conway. I'm at 733 East Sixth Street. My wife and I gents back there. We're opposed to this as well. She moved in with three small boys at the time, a family atmosphere, homesteaders for children and to replenish the neighborhood, and I would like to see that continue with the properties that are around that area. I'm opposed to this. My wife and I are opposed to this, so I just wanted to put that out there. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
My name is Shannon Wilmington. I reside at 734 East Seventh Street. Isaac is my husband, and he's put a lot of time and effort into this, and I, when he, I think we moved in in 2010, it wasn't an ideal area for me, I was actually really against it. He wanted to build on the home, he wanted to, I mean, we gutted the house, we have done a lot to it, we invested a lot of our time and a lot of money into it. Since then, we have brought two more children into the house, and when they began building the HUD homes, I was a little worrisome of what it would bring to the area, but it has built a community that I was very, I'm very happy with. I feel very safe. My children can now, I feel okay to let them leave our area, our yard, which I didn't feel comfortable with back when we first moved in, as well as getting to know the neighbors and them to blank friendships. My biggest concern with this development is what type of traffic and congestion it's going to bring to the area. Our kids can kind of move freely through the area. Where I reside on Seventh Street, the units, 16 units, are going to bring all of that traffic onto my street. Right now, there's not even a sidewalk, which there's not a lot of traffic on the road. I'm the only house facing that way, it's not a big concern at this time, but without a sidewalk, I don't even know how my children would feel safe leaving, not to mention all of that traffic. If you have 16 units, they're two to three bedrooms, you have a minimum of probably 32 vehicles that will only have access to that road in front of my home. That's going to bring a lot of traffic and a lot of congestion to the area where I don't feel that my children could even freely leave the house. And not to mention, I don't know, in the future, I agree with everyone saying, I don't know what type of families, what type of, you know, people will be there in the future, and what type of, you know, how to say it, crime it could bring to the area. I feel very safe there as of right now, and I, I agree with all of the homeowners and everything. We've kind of built a community there that I feel very comfortable and safe with, and I don't know if that'll continue. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? State your name and address or ward, please.
I'm Ray Prinellison. I'm a, I'm a landlord, and I actually-
I'm sorry, sir, can you say that again while you're under the microphone?
I'm, I'm Ray Prinellison, I'm a landlord. I own the property directly west of this, and we're definitely opposed to this. We're worried about the runoff. This, I've owned the property for over 20 years there, and this neighborhood was really bad when we first bought into this neighborhood, and we've always tried to keep good tenants in our property. And the cities come in, tore down a bunch of the problem properties, cleaned up, we've had them calling, we've had our tenants calling police on duplexes that were down the street that were having problems years and years ago, trying to get this cleaned up. And we finally got it, it's done. Now you're going to bring in 16 properties, units, that's going to, in 20 years, they're going to be back, right back to the same situation we're in right now, or were 20 years ago. It's, it's, you know, it's not a good thing, you know, when you got people scared to walk out their front doors and get in their cars to go to work, you know? They don't have that in this neighborhood anymore. But that's all I want to say, we're very opposed to this. And I, and I own a bunch of property in the, in the city, too. We own 65 units, so I know what it's about. We used to have eight complexes out at Marrikan Park, and we got out of that neighborhood, because we couldn't keep good tenants. We, we decided that we needed to get out, and someone needed to control it all, because if you don't control it all, you can't keep good people. That's why we sold out, and I think that's gotten better, because the guy that came in there bought them all, or at least most. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? All right, seeing no one, I move to close. Yep, never mind. Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
My name is Demise, and I live on East Sixth Street. I just made my opinion that I'm opposed to this idea, because right now, like my neighbor has said, we feel safe in that area, and we don't know in the future when people are coming, moving in and moving out, what kind of people are coming in the area. And we, before I moved there, and even when I moved there, I heard a lot of testimonies about that area, how it was 10 years or 20 years before. So right now, we think it's safer for, for us and our children. And in bringing, building, building that area with people moving in and coming in, we don't know how it's going to be. We, we are all homeowners in the area, so we think bringing homeowners in that area will give us a quality, neighborhood quality and safer environment. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? State your name and address or ward.
My name is Nessun Wachilfoza, and I live on East Sixth Street, 757, and I am opposed of this project, because I come from a family of, there's, I'm the oldest of 10 siblings, and growing up, when we first moved here from Rock Island, we moved in Davenport for better opportunities. My parents wanted us to have great, great education and feel safe in the neighborhood that we lived in, and apparently, that wasn't what we experienced the first few years living in Davenport. When I was in the 10th grade, I was at firsthand experiencing of a gunshot out, and ever since, we were afraid of going outside, walking to school. But ever since they removed all those housings and built on, like, other great neighborhoods, such as the humanity, um, um, humanity house, housing things, we now are able, our siblings, my younger siblings, who now go to Central or McKinley School, are now able to walk to or from school, my parents are not able to take them to school since they work full-time, even overtime, so they're not, they're not home most of the time. And another concern of mine is regarding parking. When I come from school on my days off, sometimes I have trouble finding parking spaces where I live, because there's not a lot more families now, I have to park across the street. And with that, there are situations coming, like, dealing with the traffic, since now the road behind us is closed, so now we have traffic. So my concern is, once they build those houses, the traffic is going to increase, especially during July times when there's more flood, when the flood actually happens again. And then my other concern is just feeling safe in the neighborhood, since now I'm starting, I'm studying social work with my interest in mental health. I feel like with having homes where my parents feel unsafe, it will also get back, or like, increased our struggles in mental health, and so therefore, it will all fall on us as children to have to take care of our parents because we're dealing with mental health. So if we're, if they're not feeling safe, then we also aren't able to be able to succeed in life. They won't let us to, they won't be able to let us go outside, won't be able to go to shop. Our siblings won't be able to pay outside or even take a walk. Like last night, we went outside for a walk after dinner around 10:00 PM. That won't be happening anymore, if we are having this feeling, having to feel unsafe in this neighborhoods. And that's why I am opposed. I hope you consider my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'll pause a second. All right, seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, this public hearing has been closed, and we will discuss this later on in the agenda. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next public hearings are under Public Works. Alderman R. Dunn will lead these public hearings. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Open the first public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Davenport Freight House roof replacement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. Open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2024 residential alley program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Are there any petitions or communications from the council members tonight? Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, I appreciate the time. I want to say shout out to the city and the folks that did Party in the Park in my neighborhood. Lindsay Park, we had a really good time. So if you guys missed it, shame on you. Party in the Park is where it's at right now. It's something that the city's putting on. And I was really happy because South Locust, we don't get that much love picking up. So anyway, and I also want to shout out my mom and my brother in the back tonight. My birthday month was last week and my mom and my family and my friends made sure that the month of June was a really good birthday month and pride month and all those things too. So I just really appreciate last month, my folks, my friends, my family. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. I would ask if Mr. Gleason could come and just give us a flood update, where we are right now. It's changing every little bit, so I think folks would like to know that.
Thank you, Nicole Gleason, Public Works. So the current projection is that it will hit 20 feet on Sunday. So we pretty much have all of our measures in place. I'm sure you've all felt the pain of River Drive. The detour that's in place now will likely be in place for several weeks. Residents can get information on our Be Prepared Davenport website. The current detours and all flood mitigations related to park closures, bike path closures, things like that are all on the website. And we really will finish all mitigation efforts that we should need up to stage 20 by tomorrow. So just encourage everyone to stay informed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next public hearings, I'm sorry, let's move on to our four areas of discussion, which are community development, public safety, public works and finance. And our first area to be discussed is community development. Alderman Gripp will lead the discussion. Alderman Reinrich will set the agenda. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four items on the discussion agenda this evening for community development. I'll open with number one, a second consideration ordinance for case ROW 24-03, being the request of the Davenport Community School District to vacate West Fifth Street between Cedar Street and Howell Street. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number two is a first consideration ordinance for case ORD 24-03, being the request of Grace Real Estate to amend the principal use standards in section 17.08.035, neighborhood commercial establishment of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa by adding daycare center and medical dental office as permitted uses within a neighborhood commercial district. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Go to Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. I had talked earlier today at the community update meeting. While I have an understanding of what's happening at this particular, there's a particular site that is asking for this, for the uses that it would like to do in the future. And my concerns are not necessarily with that, but with the global nature of this request. We do have certain uses in certain areas. And what these folks are asking to do in their location would, it would require changing this throughout the city. I believe that this is a pretty important thing that we really need to take a long look at because there are implications for every ward in terms of the kind of uses within neighborhoods. And so I have asked staff to prepare for next week a map of locations as they are, as it would be the neighborhood uses, commercial uses as they are now, and what it might look like were this to pass as before us tonight. So just wanted to let folks know that. I think we can have a good discussion about this. I think it's always a good idea to take global changes slowly. And of course, there are three reading, there are the three sessions of this, so that's six weeks. So there is time to talk about this, but I wanted to put that on the table tonight. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Any other comments from the council? All right, yeah, we talked a little bit about this early on. So, you know, to reiterate what Marion said, I think we do need to take a deep dive into this and look at this holistically throughout the city. I think in principle, we do need more daycares and medical and dental offices are scarce in certain parts of our city. And potentially, this would be helpful with that. But anytime that you make these recommendations or these rules and you expand them across the entire city, you kind of want to go neighborhood by neighborhood, ward by ward, and identify things that may or not may not work. So I'm looking forward to some thoughtful conversation as this moves forward. We'll keep that on discussion, Alderman Reinrich. All right, item number three is a first consideration ordinance for case REZ 24-02, being the request of Riverview Heights LLC to rezon approximately 1.47 acres of land located on the north side of the 700 block of East Sixth Street from R4C Single Family and Two-Family Central Residential Zoning District to RMF Multi-Family Residential District. Planning and zoning commission recommended denial. The protest rate is over 20% and that means eight votes are required for passage by the city council. Anyone from the public here to comment on this item?
Gary Eckland, I live in Davenport. And I wanted to, I thought for another minute about this particular deal. And 16-unit apartment buildings are not my favorite living situation, but people come and they go and they move and they rent some years. And if they're lucky, they may own some years. So there's nothing wrong with apartment buildings. But one of the blocks that this might go on, I don't know what they're planning on doing on East 10th Street over close to Pershing. There used to be some apartment buildings that I think they were 12-plex and a 12-plex with a parking lot in between. And I thought they were sturdy and stable and looked like they could last for another 100 or 200 years, but they've been demolished. I don't know what Palmer and the city's plans are, but that's a particular block that would be perfect for this development. I don't mean to, I want to encourage the developer. He's already got these plans drawn up. So I have a couple of other locations in the city where I think he could take these exact plans and label them or put them in tomorrow. Right now, there's some property that's owned by St. Ambrose and some property that's owned by St. Paul's Lutheran Church. Neither of those institutions pay property taxes. So if they were to donate this land or to sell it cheaply to this gentleman and he was to put this project up there, it would go from property that does not pay any property taxes for the sewer and the police, although they serve St. Ambrose and Palmer and the church. But there's a block on Locust Street, West Locust Street. If you go just west of Gaines, at one point in the last 20 or 30 years, St. Ambrose bought up and demolished block after block after block of housing. And now they use it as a parking lot. But I'm sure that, you know, maybe they could say freshmen don't bring cars from Chicago when they come to St. Ambrose and they can ride the bus or walk. And so that would free up that block and he could put it back on the private property tax rolls. He could pay property taxes and he could build this exact development, starting within months if St. Ambrose was to agree. And the same thing with St. Paul's Lutheran Church on Brady Street, right by Vandavere. They bought up and demolished beautiful mansions that used to be there that were in perfect condition, that people lived in for a long time and would be still living in still. If you want to know the kind of houses they demolished, go down Main Street between Locust and Vandavere and look at those houses and say that you wouldn't like living in those. But they demolished those houses so that they could have more parking, but they've got several blocks of parking that are only used for a couple hours on Sundays. And I would certainly agree to let them park in Vandavere if they're not allowed to already on Sundays, you know, and walk to the church. So there's an entire block that his project could be plopped down on in between. If you go past Locust, there's East Pleasant. And on your left-hand side, as you're heading towards Vandavere, there are several blocks that are sitting empty right now. And I'm quite sure that his project would probably fit nicely within just one of those parking lot blocks. And so if St. Paul's Lutheran Church would consent to sell it cheaply to him, we could, he could build his project exactly like he's got it written out there. And we could go from not collecting any property tax on that property to collecting property tax on that property. And the churchgoers who come on Sunday morning could park in Vandavere and walk.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? All right, we will go to council with comments. Anyone from the council? Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you. If we could have, we talked a little bit about this when we did the conveyance a few months ago, a couple, yeah, it was a couple of months ago. But if I could ask Mr. Berger to come up first and talk about the history of this, that what we have tried to, what the city has tried to do in the past, how the city collected it and all of this.
Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development. So this site, some of the history, I don't know how far back you want to go, but from a high level, there used to be housing on all of these lots. And starting in the 1960s, 70s, they started to fall into disrepair, disinvestment. City started acquiring them around that time period. Fast forward to roughly 2010, most of the properties were acquired by the city with the idea of assisting with redeveloping. On a positive note, it has a very great view. As we talked a little bit earlier, some of the negatives that have precluded development over the years, I think have been referenced, there's topography challenges, huge hill to get up from Sixth Street. Seventh Street really doesn't function very well. It's a little bit tough to access. It functions more like an alley. So anyway, a number of those factors have played into it. The city during its ownership did try to solicit residential development of the property roughly a decade ago. And there were no interested developers at the time. Fast forward to 2017, so about six or seven years ago, we had a developer come forward who acquired the site. Actually acquired it from the city, wanted to put six single-family houses there and actually acquired it, replatted it, so it's currently platted for six lots, and then wasn't able to get the financing in place because I think appraised values are low enough that the cost of building doesn't allow for the value of the home at the back end. So with that, that kind of brought us to where we are now. I think those have been the challenges over the years to get it developed.
And those were, so the city's plan was to have market rate houses there, is that correct?
Yeah, I think in working with the Neighborhood Association there, starting back in the 1990s, that was an intent to bring back owner-occupied housing ideally, not really with a reference to market rate or income, but just at least owner-occupied. And just having, as mentioned, I think over the last 20 years or so, just haven't been able to make the dollars and cents work out. It needs a little bit more density probably to make the cost of construction pencil out.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I appreciate it. So as a product of somebody who is south of- Hello. As a product of somebody who is south of Locust, I want to see this on discussion because I want to speak to these folks or hear what they're saying because I wasn't at the plan and the zoning. A lot of these people had reached out to me. So I think that the things that people want for their neighborhood, AKA like downtown Davenport, the Elmore Corridor, these folks want the same thing that every other section of the city wants. So I want to keep this on discussion so I can see, one, what the idea of the, besides the picture, the idea of the gentleman that's building. Two, I really want to hear these folks' story because my uncle lived on Tremont. So I'm really familiar with this neighborhood. Me and my brother played on Sixth and Tremont forever in that empty parking lot that was right across the street from my uncle's house. And I know the times that you guys are talking about, that we had to duck and get in the house. But, you know, everybody deserves to have their kids outside. Everybody deserves to be able to walk their kids. So I want to hear more of that. So I definitely want to keep this on discussion and keep this conversation rolling. Sorry, gentlemen, I know you're tired, but, you know, maybe, like I said, I would love to have a one-on-one with you, Mr. Wilmington. So, you know, if we can make that possible. And I was trying to get to the builder as well, so thank you.
Any other comments from the council? All right. Mr. Thompson, would you be able to come up and answer a couple of questions? I'm sorry, I was at the neighborhood meeting and I just don't have my notebook with me tonight to remember. Sorry, go ahead.
Jim Thompson, citizen of Davenport.
Okay. What's the overall cost of the development?
Right around $5 million.
Do you, do you have, when you say market, market rate, what price point are you?
Three bedrooms in our business plan are $1,800 a month. And the one-bedroom's $1,350.
So some of the other issues, and you kind of touched on it earlier, some of the big issues that were brought up was being able to maintain the road. Seventh Street, it's a very narrow street. It's currently a brick road. It is in very poor condition. I agree, it would be very difficult and expensive to bring it back to brick if we did that. I do like your idea of a combination of concrete and brick. But there's a willingness by you to look at what can be done there.
We, in order for this to be successful, we would have to do that.
And almost certainly, well, not almost certainly. If this project were to get done, one of the benefits would be you would be getting a new Seventh Street. It would definitely be improved.
It would have to be done.
And then the, one of the other issues was being able to, with an increase in car traffic for 16 units, if you figure two cars, maybe 32 vehicles to look at that, there's no sidewalk up there on a narrow, on a narrow road. And so initially, you would ask for a sidewalk waiver, but you're open to-
Yes, we'll put a sidewalk in.
You would put a sidewalk in if that's, if that's what it took. Okay. All right, I think those are my questions. Thank you. Well, yeah, anybody else while he's up here? Okay, I'll continue then. You know, this is a piece of land I'm very familiar with. This is my ninth year on the council. This was not new when I started on the council. This was something that Alderman Bill Boom had been working on for years when I came on. And the staff had been working on this for years before he came on. But the city has put a significant investment into East Sixth Street and it has been pretty successful. And actually, a lot of the folks who are in the room tonight have been a part of that success and a beneficiary of some of the steps that not only the city, but Habitat for Humanity and others have done to kind of revitalize that corridor. So like one thing I said at the neighborhood meeting, which is like, you know, trust me, we don't want to, we, anybody who's been a part of this redevelopment for a long time, do not want to put something in your neighborhood that we think would be detrimental to your neighborhood. I just, I have to say that because we've been spent, we've been spending over a decade trying to revitalize it to some success. And you being here this evening is kind of a testament to that. Infill development is good. If the city of Davenport is going to be financially sustainable for decades to come, we are going to have to do infill development. Infill development is also very hard to do because typically neighbors are very fearful of the unknown, of what might be, what might go there, who might live there, what might become of this property. Okay, but currently, we've got a large vacant lot that generates zero tax revenue, gets service from the city, right? We need to repair that road. We have to plow it. We have to pick up trash. We've got to do all of these things, but it's bringing in no revenue. So when we redevelop these parcels of land in our central city, it makes us financially stronger and it's something we have to do. But we have these difficult conversations. The fact that a developer is coming into this neighborhood and investing $5 million for market rate, $1,800 for a three-bedroom, $1,350 for a one-bedroom, okay? That is significant. That is something probably 15 years ago, we would say, not gonna happen, not possible, not in that neighborhood. Today, that is. Today, that is possible. So I think that the question is, is it the right fit? And it's a legitimate question. And the folks who live in the neighborhood have legitimate reasons for why they're fearful of the development. I think there's a lot of goodness to this development, okay? The developer is a local Davenport guy who's got a proven track record. It's $5 million investment in our central city. It's market rate, and I think it should be seriously considered. But also, we do need to consider what the residents are bringing to us. So of course, Alderman Kelly, this will stay on the discussion agenda and we'll, we'll have more discussion on it next week. All right, with that, we will move to item number four, which is a resolution setting a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of vacated alley right-of-way located west of North Division Street between West Pleasant Street and Hickory Grove Road to Wallex Auto Service LLC and IA-12 Davenport LLC petitioners. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this?
Gary Ekland, I'll be, I'll be quick, I'll try anyway. I'm, I'm, I think I'm in favor of part of this at least. It mentions Wallex Auto Service, and while I don't think I've ever taken cars there.
So just for clarification, are you in favor of setting the public hearing?
Sure.
Okay.
There's two, two beneficiaries.
All right, Mr. Ekland, there is a tornado warning until 7:15. Should, should we move people to the basement, or what do you recommend?
Okay, I'm not worried if you're not worried.
Want everybody safe, please.
Yeah, this is. I don't think that's me, but.
It's everybody, sir.
Yeah.
I don't think we can do anything about it.
Yeah, I was going to say this is the. We're all okay. You get used to those, and then, and then when it's important, we'll probably all ignore it. This is, the thing that we were talking about was vacating some alleyway to Wallex Auto Service. And I know if there are the people that I'm thinking of up close to Five Points, they've been there a long time. And I'm not opposed to turning part of this alley over there, but I'm not asking a specific question of anybody right now. But recently, a whole bunch of houses, I forget now whether it was six or eight or 10 houses at Five Points, were demolished and a car wash was put in where those houses used to stand. And I never saw any public hearings down here at City Hall about the demolition of houses. And I don't know if it's required. Like if I said tomorrow that I want to buy 20 houses close to West High School and I want to demolish them and put in a car wash, I don't know whether there's a public hearing or not. But what I'd like, I just want to know that the alleyway that they're talking about vacating would be vacated because a whole bunch of livable houses were demolished for a car wash.
I'm going to interrupt you.
Given that we are a storm-ready community, it's the recommendation of Fire Chief Carlston and the fact that we have members of the public here that we relocate to the basement until this is expired.
We have people directing folks to the basement then. So if we could, if we could, if we could get it, we will resume our meeting when it's done, but please follow whoever is guiding us to the basement. It's to your, to your right, okay? I think we have to.
Motion to recess.
I'd like to make a motion to recess the meeting temporarily. So moved. Could I have a second to, a second?
And we will come back, so.
Got to go in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Merritt, should we proceed or wait a couple of minutes? I think.
The chief has cleared it, you're good to go.
All right, Alderman Grip, if you would continue, please. Could I have a motion to come back at a recess? So moved. All in favor? Aye. Let's go, okay.
All right, thank you, thank you, Your Honor. So we are still on the community development agenda. We're on item number four, public comment to set the resolution, or approve the resolution setting a public hearing. Is there anyone else from the public who is here to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item moves on. Alderman Reinhart, will you please set our agenda?
Thank you. I make a motion to move items number one and number four to the consent agenda and maintain items two and three still on discussion.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Our agenda has been set, back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Grip and Reinhart. Our second area to be discussed is public safety. Interestingly enough, Alderman Jovian will lead this discussion and Alderman T. Dunn will set the agenda. Alderman Jovian.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. First item under the public safety agenda is a second consideration ordinance amending Schedule VI speed limits of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Admissible Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding 49th Street from Fairmont Street to Pine Street as a 35 mile per hour street there, too. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing no one, anyone from council? Seeing no one, that item will move on. Item number two, second consideration ordinance amending Schedule VI speed limits of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Admissible Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding 60th Street from Wisconsin Avenue to Fairmont Street as a 35 mile per hour street there, too. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number three, second consideration ordinance amending Schedule XI resident parking only of Chapter 10.96 entitled Schedules of the Admissible Code of Davenport, Iowa by adding Spalding Boulevard along the frontage of 707 and 708 Spalding Boulevard there, too. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. Item number four, resolution approving street lane and public ground closure requests on listed dates and times for outdoor events. I will read each of these before asking for comment. First, Freight House Farmers Market, temporary market due to flooding. Scott County Administrative Center, 600 West Fourth Street, 4:00 AM, Saturday, July 6, 2024 through 3:00 PM, Sunday, July 7, 2024, and 4:00 AM, Saturday, July 13, 2024 through 3:00 PM, Sunday, July 14, 2024, closure Western Avenue from West Fourth Street to West Fifth Street. Please note, this is to be voted on later on this agenda. Next, Daiquiri Factory, Max Tavern, Kilkeny's and Carriage House, Bix Block Party, 300 block of West Third Street, 9:00 AM, Friday, July 26, 2024 through 3:00 AM, July, or Sunday, July 28, 2024, closure West Third Street from Ripley Street to Harrison Street. Next, Office Bix Party, 116 West Third Street, approximately 11:00 AM till 11:30 PM, Saturday, July 27, 2024, closure Northern Parkin Lane and Travel Lane in front of 116 West Third Street. Next, Mississippi River Distilling Company Downtown Lounge, Grand Band Night, 318 East Second Street, 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Saturday, August 10, 2024, closure East-West Alley between East Second Street, East Third Street from Iowa Street to the Mid-American Parking Lot. And last, Sweet Delight Ice Cream Car Show, 1901 West Fourth Street, 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Sunday, September 29, 2024, closure Hall Street from West Third Street to West Fourth Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Please step to the podium, name, order, address.
Derek Cornet, Seventh Ward. I'd like to see if you all could find some, find out how much it's going to cost the city for the Daiquiri Factory, the Office, Bix Party, and the Mississippi River Distilling Company. Because they're going to need police coverage. How much is it's going to cost the city to provide police coverage for these? And are these businesses going to pay the city for the police coverage? The last time I asked that question, the police chief said they didn't have any charges unless there was alcohol concern. So I think these would have alcohol concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, anyone from council? Then I would just ask, to the gentleman's point, for staff, if we could have any information shared along that lines, whether shared via email to council or a report.
We'll look into that and provide an update to the council and possibly we can share it next week as well.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else, that item will move on. Item number five, motion approving noise variance requests on listed dates and times for outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, Southeast Little League End of Season Celebration Prairie Heights Park, 5600 Eastern Avenue, 10 to 15 minutes or less between 8:45 PM, 9:30 PM on Sunday, July 7, 2024, fireworks over 50 DBA. Please note, this is to be voted on later on in this agenda. Next, Daiquiri Factory, Max Tavern, Kilkeny's and Carriage House, Bix Block Party, 300 block of West Third Street, 7:30 PM to 10:30 PM, Friday, July 26, 2024, and 11:00 AM, Saturday, July 27, 2024 through 12:00 AM, Sunday, July 28, 2024, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Next, the Office Bix Party, 116 West Third Street, approximately 11:00 AM to 11:30 PM, Saturday, July 27, 2024, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. Next, Mississippi River Distilling Company Downtown Lounge, Garage Band Night, 318 East Second Street, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Saturday, August 10, 2024, outdoor music band over 50 DBA. And last, Sweet Delight Ice Cream Car Show, 1901 West Fourth Street, 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Sunday, September 29, 2024, outdoor music over 50 DBA. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Seeing none, anyone from council? Seeing none, that item will move on. And then we have item number six, motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read those listed under Section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. First, Daiquiri Factory, 303 West Third Street, temporary extended outdoor area, July 26 through 28, license type Class C liquor on premises. Next, Hy-Vee Betendorf Post Race, 500 East Third Street, outdoor area license type special Class C beer slash wine on premises. Next, Kilkeny's Pub and Eatery, 300 West Third Street, temporary extended outdoor area, July 26 through 28, license type Class C liquor on premises. Next, Max Tavern, 316 West Third Street, temporary extended outdoor area, July 26 through 28, license type Class C liquor on premises. Next, the Office, 116 West Third Street, temporary extended outdoor area, July 26 through 28, license type Class C liquor on premises. Next, Wide River Winery, X of 6, 1128 Mile Street, temporary event with outdoor area, August 6 through 10, license type Class C, or excuse me, license type special Class C beer slash wine on premises. Next, Candy's Back Bar, 4751 Progress Drive, new license with outdoor area, license type Class C liquor on premises. Next, Chipotle Mexican Grill, 1020 West Kimberly Road, new license, license type special Class C beer slash wine on premises. And then there are those listed under Section B, the annual license renewals, which I will not read, but are there for review. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Please step to the podium, name, order, address, please. And item about which you're, one, two, comment.
Derek Cornet, Seventh Ward. I was wondering if the police representative could give us a rundown on the safety records and the, any incidents on the Daiquiri Factory, Kilkeny's and Max Tavern and the Office.
Anyone else from public wishing to comment on any of these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, then I would just ask staff if we can get any reports based on the gentleman's questions. Thank you. Excuse me. Seeing no one else, I would then ask Alderman Tim Dunn to please set our agenda.
Make a motion to put all items of public safety on a consent agenda excluding all items to be voted on later on the agenda.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That closes public safety. Back to you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Alderman Jovian and Alderman T. Dunn. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works. Alderman Rick Dunn will lead the discussion and Alderman Kelly will set the agenda. Alderman Rick Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a resolution accepting work completed under the Goose Creek Trail, 46th Street to 53rd Street overlay project by laying in construction in the amount of $196,943.50. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution wording a contract for the Colony Drive Reconstruction, Brown Street to Gaines Street to Five Cities Construction Company in the amount of $419,155.8. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the planned specification, form of contract and estimated costs for the Davenport Freight House roof replacement project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the planned specification, form of contract and estimated cost for the 2024 residential alley program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a motion approving an engineering agreement with Canadian Pacific Kansas City Railway for the riverfront quiet zone projects in the amount not to exceed $70,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number six is a motion approving change order number four with Sasaki Associates for the design of a new play feature for the Main Street Landing Destination Iowa Project in the amount not to exceed $85,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Derek Cornet, Seventh Ward. Looking at this, I can't believe that we're even considering making the big draw for this destination area, a slide area that looks like a roller dam. Who in the world approved that? They must be on some sort of drugs. A roller dam is something that was built in the last century. It's mechanical, it's cold, it performs a function very well. But just because we got the biggest one in the world doesn't mean that everybody wants to come and see one. You know, if you didn't live around a roller dam, I don't think anybody would know what a roller dam is. So making our pride and joy for this destination area a slide that looks like a roller dam. Oh, let's go to Davenport because they have this thing that looks like a roller dam. Really? This is what you're hanging your hat on to bring the destination park together? Those drawings are just ridiculous. We've given Sasaki over $1 million over the last two years, and they've come up with nothing of substance. And if this is the crap that they're giving us, these roller dam slides, really? You know, I'd still be asking for what, you know, what are we getting for our money? Because I haven't seen anything that looks good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from council? Seeing all number.
Thank you. I did just want to clarify that the roller dam feature that you're seeing is not the main feature of the park. And I think we'll see, it's coming to us in August. We'll see the main features, which are still play towers, one or two. Like I can't remember where we settled. But this is kind of a, in addition to what they've got because it fits within the budget, but it needs to be designed. And I'm sure the kids are going to love it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Be happy to. I would like to make a motion to move all six items onto the casino agenda.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that concludes Public Works for this evening. Your Honor, back to you.
Our final area to be discussed tonight is finance. There are no items on the agenda this evening. And listed below are the purchases of $10,000 to $50,000 for your information. Would you like to make the motion to approve these? Oh, would you, public with comment?
To have some information on number two, purchases $10,000 to $50,000. There was a settlement with Daisy G. Henshaw. What was that settlement for?
Point of order, are we doing public comment on $50,000 and under now? No, okay.
Okay, no comment.
We can't comment on this?
You can comment, I don't think we're responding, sir. All right. All right, so we, you do need a motion. I'm sorry, I. I'm sorry, I...
No motion.
No motion. Okay, so, okay, okay, that's fine. Okay, you have nothing. Okay, there is nothing except the $10,000, $50,000, and we accept those as presented. The next area is other ordinances, resolutions, and motions, and we do have two items tonight. First, or three items. First, we have to have the rules need to be suspended, so is there a motion for suspension of the rules to vote on the listed items? So moved? Okay, a motion has been moved and seconded for suspension of the rules. Brian, please call the roll.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Burke Holder?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Reiners?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ardone?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Anne Newton?
Yes.
Nine, yes, as your honor.
All right, the resolution is a revolution approving street lane and public ground closure requests on the listed dates and times for outdoor events, and this is the Freight House Farmers Market, temporary market due to flooding. Scott County Administrative Center, 600 West Fourth Street, 4:00 a.m. Saturday, July 6, 2024 to 3:00 p.m. Sunday, July 7, 2024, and 4:00 a.m. Saturday, July 13, 2024 to 3:00 p.m. Sunday, July 14, 2024. The closure is Western Avenue from West Fourth Street to West Fifth Street. And is there any public with comment on this? Seeing none, will an Alderman move the resolution? Any discussion from Aldermen? Brian, please call the roll on the resolution.
Ardone?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Reiners?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Burke Holder?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
And Gripp?
Yes.
Nine, yes, as your honor.
All right, thank you. Then we have a motion approving a noise variance request on the listed date and time for an outdoor event, and that is the Southeast Little League End of Season Celebration Prairie Heights Park, 5600 Eastern Avenue, 10 to 15 minutes or less between 8:45 p.m. and 9:30 p.m. on Sunday, July 7, 2024. Fireworks over 50 dB. Is there any public with comment? Will an Alderman please move the motion?
So moved, second.
Is there any discussion from Aldermen? If not, Brian, please call the roll and the motion.
Kelly?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Ardone?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Burke Holder?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Reiners?
Yes.
Nine, yes, as your honor.
All right, and then are there any reports of city officials, and I believe Alderman Gripp, you had a report to make tonight?
I do, thank you. I missed my opportunity earlier in the meeting to provide an update on the city administrator search. So over the last few weeks, the search committee has been providing feedback and input in the development of the recruitment brochure. As of today, the position has been posted and reflects all of the feedback received from the committee. We have tentatively scheduled interviews for September 9 and 10, and we're also in the process of finalizing a community reception meet and greet for the finalists. This is currently planned for Monday, September 9 at 6 p.m. As these details become solidified, we will be sharing them again. The position will close on July 26, so it's open most of the month of July, and the committee will meet again in August to deliberate, and we will select the finalists to take part in the September 9 and 10 interviews. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? I would ask an Alderman to move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with council and matters involving litigation pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 21.51(c).
So moved.
It's been motioned and seconded. I will have Mr. Cupp call the roll, but I just want to let everybody know that the council will not be, they'll be adjourning the meeting after executive session, and we will not be returning to this chamber. Thank you for hanging with us in the basement and here tonight. Brian, please call the roll.
Reiners?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Burke Holder?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.